We're about to get started, okay? Can I ask, maybe we can just all move in? We know, you heard and seen and just come on up. You know, just take the front tables here. This is very informal. The idea is this, uh, to really connect the community and get everybody together, okay? So just come on up and don't be shy. Can you all rise while we join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing as we play the national anthem.
(SINGING) Can you see by the dawn journey of light? What so proudly we hail at the twelfth last evening? Whose cross stripes and bright stars through the perilous night? O'er the red march we march, whose song gets me screaming? Have you ever felt the flag, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Okay, I'm going to ask the principal here at school number 52, Dr. Lachlan Kaden Jr., to join us, and she's going to recite the Pledge of Ethics, Ms. Lydia Tye.
As a member of the Elizabeth Public Schools Professional Learning Community, I will treat people as I wish to be treated. To do that, I pledge to: Understand that the school community is a special place; Listen respectfully when someone else is speaking by paying post-attention and not interrupting; Speak in a calm voice and use proper language; Dress appropriately for teaching and learning; Inspire the best in myself and others by celebrating successes and learning from mistakes; Care about others by demonstrating acts of kindness; Be a lifelong learner by taking every opportunity to learn from others.
Thank you. Now, we're going to play our chorus, please.
We believe all students can learn and achieve the high goals.
In Elizabeth Public Schools, we're going to mean actively creating and implementing challenging standards that define the level of cognitive complexity of expected learning. Such standards are applied at all levels in the district, including classroom activities, instructional plans, course content, student work, assessments, both summative and formative.
We will ensure that all students graduate prepared to pursue their full secondary education.
It is through such an education that the achievement gap is eliminated.
Elizabeth Public School students will strengthen the nation's economic, intellectual, and social impact on the world.
In order to do this, we will ensure that every student, regardless of their socioeconomic background, is inspired to participate fully in their educational experience and cultivate a true passion for learning.
We believe that teachers make a positive difference in student achievement.
Elizabeth Public Schools teachers make a positive difference visible not only through higher test scores, graduation rates, and attendance, but by championing the love of learning at every opportunity.
We will recruit, develop, retain, and celebrate world-class teachers.
A world-class educator has high expectations of himself and their students; is willing to challenge and be challenged; emphasizes learning opportunities for continuous growth. Such an educator sees the potential in every child with no exceptions.
They teach with passion and make an effort to ensure that every student reaches their full potential.
We believe that effective leaders produce excellent results.
Effective leaders are conduits for student success, inspiring Elizabeth students to think, to learn, to achieve, and to care.
Effective leaders engage others, bringing the trust and loyalty of those around them. It is their incredible passion and energy that engage, inspire, and motivate others to achieve excellence.
We will recruit, develop, retain, and reward result-driven leaders.
The goal is something excellent results, and effective leaders do not tolerate anything less than excellence.
Our leaders will demonstrate an honoring will to contribute to and enable those around them to increase student achievement.
We believe a high-performing team produces a legacy of enduring greatness.
Elizabeth Public Schools is dependent on its internal and external networks, working in collaboration to ensure high student achievement. The internal team members include the teachers, staff, and community members that directly affect students' achievement. The external team includes the community at large, partnerships with nonprofit organizations and universities, faith-based communities, and state and national education leaders.
We will build a high-performing team that achieves excellence.
The end result is a sustainable system that supports networks of people committed to excellence through education.
Our students will leave Elizabeth Public Schools with a passion for learning that will lead them through a lifetime of fulfilled dreams.
Okay, now we're going to have a performance by the children from school number one here in the Elizabeth Board section. I thought it was appropriate, since we're hosting this event down here, that we bring the children from the area to perform for us, okay? So if we can bring the children in, I believe they're going to sing for us.
Our first song was written by the Voice and Singing. It is often called "The Black National Anthem." It was written as a poem by James Holden Johnson and then set to music by John Rosewood Johnson in 1900 as part of the celebration of Lady's Birthday on February 12th, 1900. It was first performed on that occasion by a choir of 500 schoolchildren at the Separatist Native School in Jacksonville, Florida, where James Holden Johnson was the principal. Singing this song quickly became a way for African-Americans to demonstrate their patriotism and hope for teacher. And calling for Earth and Heaven to reign with the harmonies of liberty, they could speak out subtly against racism and Jim Crow laws, and especially a huge number of lynchings accompanied the rise of the U.S. Klan at the turn of the century. In 1919, the NAACP adopted the song as the Black National Anthem. By the '20s, copies of "The Voice and Singing" were found in black churches across the country, often based within the homes. During and after the Americans' Rights Movement, the song experienced public birth, and by the 1970s was published on the New England Art Association banner at public events and conferences across the United States, where the event had a significant African-American population. The song is also inspired by songs created by Roseware from 1939 and from famous recording artists such as Anita Baker, Stephanie Mills, Dionne Moore, Bobby Brown, Stevie Wonder, Jeffrey Osmond, Amy and Cecil Martin, Dave Sticks, and others who performed the song. Due to the success of those famous recordings by Deloitte, "The Voice and Singing" was entered into the Congressional Record as the official African-American national anthem. So, there was a history of songs.[660.12][660.12](APPLAUSE) Now, the second song, basically, is called "Water is White," and is what we call a partner song, where you actually have two songs that sound completely good together and nothing sung at the same time. You'll hear each song individually and then put together, so enjoy.
Let's hear it again for our children from school number one. Great job, guys, thank you. Okay, moving right along here, folks. Before I introduce the presenters of this, I'd just like to recognize a few people that deserve recognition, without them, this couldn't be possible. You know, often, the commissioners on the board event, we come up with this idea, talk to the community, and we realize that there's a need for information, and we try to, that's what we're trying to do here, is make it accessible so you have the information that's required and that you've been asking for. We're not going to answer all the questions here today, but we're going to answer as many as we can, and we brought some great people here. I'd like to recognize our acting superintendent, Mrs. Olga Yugomir, is here with us tonight. She has brought her staff. We have Mr. Gerald Dunn, Mr. Cortez. We have our board secretary, Mr. Bud Kennedy, Assistant Secretary, Mr. Don Gonzalez. If I'm missing anyone, please forgive me. The idea again is to be informal, this is not a formal meeting of the Board of Education, it's a public forum, and we're going to hope to exchange ideas and information with you. I'd like to present to you my colleagues. Vice President of the Board of Education is Elsie Ospina. Commissioner Pereira, Paul Pereira. And our newly-elected member of the board is Jose Rodriguez. And for those who do not know me, my name is Carlos Coheen. If you would just allow me to say two words in Spanish, because I know there's a group of Spanish speaking only here, and it's unfortunate we don't have the whole presentation in Spanish, but that was brought to my attention, but we're going to work on that, okay? So we can get the information back. Buenas noches. No, buenas noches.
Buenas noches.
Que no se me vaya a quedar dormido, okay? Mire, que la idea de esto fue poder traer la información a nuestro público, a personas, los residentes de la ciudad de Jersey, porque esto le afecta mucho a nuestros niños, y había una necesidad, la comunidad pidió la información, nosotros estamos tratando de reunir aquí, traer el proceso ustedes. Esto no es una reunión oficial de la Junta de Educación, más que todo es para la información. Hoy van a haber varias preguntas que ustedes tienen, se les va a tratar de contestar todas las preguntas, esas cuales quedan sin contestar, aquí hay a las personas que se las pueden contestar, y les vamos a poner en contacto con esas personas. Tenemos una presentación para ustedes, que fortunadamente es en inglés. So, esos cuales no hablan inglés de nada, van a entender poco, pero... Me imagino que vinieron aquí porque tienen preguntas, so al final de la presentación se les va a dar la oportunidad de hacer esas preguntas a todos, okay? Como ya conocen, Elsie Ospina, la vicepresidenta de la Junta de Educación, el señor Paul Pereira, el comisionado, y el nuevo miembro, el señor José Rodriguez, y para los que no me conocen, yo soy Carlos Trudillo. Bienvenidos, espero que la ayuden estos nacos, estamos aquí a servir. Ahora les voy a presentar las personas que van a hacer las presentaciones. Okay, now we're going to, I'm going to bring up the, I think we're going to change it up, right? You guys are going to try to translate, okay? That's great, I thank you. Okay, I'm going to bring up the Anti-Bullying Coordinator, Eunice Concello, and our district psychologist, Dr. Lucy Hernandez. And they're going to take over the show now.
Thank you for coming out and giving up your time to be here with us. I hope that what we have for you today will be informative and perhaps fill some holes in the knowledge you have of what the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights is. We are going to try to switch up a little bit and try to put some salient points in Spanish, not the whole thing, but parts of it.
Vamos a tratar de poner algunas cosas en español, no podemos hacerlo todo, pero algunos puntos directos vamos a traducirlo.
Pero, amá, perdón. Soy Luciana, también para informarles de que estas presentaciones también las hacemos durante el día en las escuelas para los padres, y las hemos hecho en español y las hemos hecho en inglés, o sea, de que si ustedes estuvieran interesados en tener una información más detallada en español, les pueden dar el nombre suyo y la escuela, y entonces nos ponemos en contacto con las personas de la escuela para entonces tener ese tipo de reunión, y así se sientan más informados.
Okay, the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights was signed in January 2011, and it started being implemented in the school districts across New Jersey in September of 2011. And this act did a lot of things, but the most important, or the things that everyone sees the most, were that it gave a definition to harassment, intimidation, and bullying. It required certain staff to do certain things, and it required certain processes to be put in place in every school district in New Jersey. The definition of harassment, intimidation, and bullying is any gesture, any physical act, or anything that is written or electronic in the form of communication. It has to be something that is motivated by specific categories that are in the law. For example, the law specifically states that in order for something to be bullying, it has to be based on one of these categories: race, color, religion, ancestry, national origin, gender, sexual orientation, gendered identity and expression, mental, physical, or sensory disability. Now, all those things are found in the New Jersey Law Against Disabilities. However, if whatever happens doesn't match any of that, the law covers it as it has to have another distinguishing characteristic. An example of a distinguishing characteristic would be, for example, if a student has a visible scar from an accident or something and is made fun of because of that distinguishing characteristic of that student in particular. It can be a series of things that happen, it can also be just one thing that happens. It can take place anywhere: in school, on the bus, in the playground, at a sports event. It could even happen over the weekend or at night, as long as it has an impact on how the school is run. If something flows over from the weekend into the school building, then the law says that we will investigate it. It also has to be something that is physically or emotionally harmful to the recipient, or it's insulting or demeaning, or it creates a hostile educational environment. That's the whole definition, the most, the part that parents ask me most about is the part about the motivation. Sometimes things happen that may not be, that may not matter bad. Someone gets hit, or they call someone names. However, if it's not based on one of these distinguishing characteristics, according to the law, we cannot call it harassment, intimidation, or bullying. I'm going to take a little side track in the Spanish now.
La definición de bullying, que en español es el abuso escolar, está basada sencillamente en la ley. O sea, que es posible que una persona tenga una definición personal de lo que es el abuso escolar, pero en realidad es la definición legal lo que importa. Según la ley, el bullying puede ser un gesto, un acto físico, algo por escrito o por una comunicación electrónica, como por correo electrónico o por texting o algo de ese tipo. Pero tiene que estar basado de que este acto fue causado por una característica de la persona. La característica puede ser basada en la raza de la persona, en el color de la persona, la religión de la persona, descendencia, descendencia de la persona, origen nacional, sexo, orientación sexual, identidad sexual, impedimento físico, mental, o sensorial, o otro, otro tipo de característica que identifique a esa persona como diferente. So, por ejemplo, si, si la persona... So, por ejemplo, si la persona tiene algo en la apariencia, que tenga una cicatriz, o algo que lo hagan conducir a algo diferente, eso se consideraría una característica. Este acto puede ser un acto solo, un solo incidente, o puede ser varios incidentes. Puede tomar lugar en la escuela, o puede tomar lugar fuera de la escuela, o en una actividad que ha sido auspiciada por la escuela. Este acto tiene que interrumpir la operación normal de la escuela, y cualquier persona que observe este acto se da cuenta de que esto causa daño físico, o causa miedo a la persona de que le vayan a causar un daño físico. Tiene el intento de insultar, o degradar a la persona, y crea una situación de hostilidad, y interfiere con la educación de la persona.
We're gonna take a minute now. If you have a handout, or if you don't have it, raise your hand. We'll make sure that you get the handout to talk a little bit about teasing versus bullying. Okay, so all of you, I hope, have gotten the handout.
Esto no lo tenemos en este momento, acá, con nosotros, en español. Pero si nos dan de nuevo, si nos dan el nombre suyo y su dirección, se lo podemos mandar, porque lo tenemos por escrito en español en la oficina.
We spent a lot of time training our staff members on being able to tell what is teasing and what is bullying according to the law. And we use this chart with them also. And when looking at things, we have to look at what the roles of the people are. If it's teasing, usually both people have negative acts towards each other. And sometimes kids will tell us, "Oh, it's a game, and we tell each other things, and everybody..." Because they're both doing the same thing. On the other hand, it's more like bullying if there's always going in one direction. So if somebody is always calling somebody else names, and that person isn't saying anything back, it's more like bullying. We also have to look at the intent. Is there an intent to cause some harm? With teasing, there's usually no intent. That's not the primary goal, they're both doing things. While in bullying, there isn't intent to cause some harm to that person. We also look at the balance of power. If it's teasing, the balance of power is equal. They are playful, they're limited in what they say or do to each other. They're equal in power. In bullying, there's usually one of the two people who has more power. And the comments are directed at vulnerabilities. In other words, that characteristic that we talked about a little while ago, they focus on that characteristic. And the negative things that are happening increase as the other person gets more distressed. Doesn't stop. We also look at the purpose. With teasing, usually the people teasing each other have a relationship. And they're concerned for each other, even though they may be doing these actions, which we may think that aren't very good. But they want to continue having that relationship. With bullying, the person who's seeking the power, the only motive is to do harm to that person. There is no motivation about keeping that relationship, or having a relationship with that person. And with teasing, empathy is present. For example, if something goes a little bit too far, and one student says, "You know, what he said hurt my feelings", that person who said it usually doesn't know that he was hurting someone else's feelings. It's usually remorseful, they're really sorry about it, they didn't mean it. While in bullying, there's no remorse. In fact, oftentimes, the victim gets blamed for bringing that on him or herself.
Hay cinco puntos clave que ayudan a entender la diferencia entre el conflicto y el acoso escolar. Uno de ellos es la posición que se toma en una situación. Cuando es un asunto de conflicto, la posición varía. O sea, que si tenemos dos estudiantes que tienen un conflicto, un día yo soy la que me pongo brava con la persona, la próxima vez la persona se pone brava conmigo. O sea, que varían la posición. En términos del acoso escolar, la posición nunca varía. La persona que es la víctima siempre va a ser la víctima, y la persona que agrede siempre va a ser la persona que agrede. El otro punto clave es la intención. En el conflicto, porque todos los niños pueden tener conflicto, la intención no es dañar, me pongo brava, o sea, que me enfado, y me dijo algo que después me arrepiento. Pero en el caso del acoso escolar, la intención siempre es pedir al niño, que es la víctima. El otro punto es el balance del poder. En el conflicto, el poder siempre varía. Un día yo tengo más poder, al otro día la otra persona se siente más poderosa, o que tiene más amistades, o está muy opuesto, o algo así. En el caso del acoso escolar, el niño que está siendo acosado nunca se va a sentir que tiene ese poder. El otro punto es el propósito. En el conflicto, las personas pueden tener una pequeña pelea, pero siempre el propósito es mantener la amistad. Hoy no estamos de acuerdo, pero después no podemos arreglar. En el caso del acoso escolar, en realidad no hay un propósito de mantener esa relación, o de mantener esa amistad. El punto final es tener compasión o empatía con la otra persona. En el conflicto, si hago algo que llegue a la otra persona, me siento mal, me siento con pena. Cuando en el caso del acoso escolar, no me siento con pena. Siempre voy a pensar que la culpa paga en la otra persona. El niño tiene en realidad la misma.
So what is it that Elizabeth Public Schools are doing to make sure that we do what the law calls for? According to the law, we make sure that we have an anti-bullying specialist at each building. That's what the law requires. In fact, the district goes beyond that if we make sure that we have an alternate anti-bullying specialist at each building, so that if someone's at a workshop, or there's more cases to investigate, that we always have someone there. We also meet all the website requirements. If you look on the district website, you'll find my name, and my address, and my telephone number, and my email, all the different ways you can contact me. You will also find that information on each school website. You will also find a list of all the anti-bullying specialists in each school. All of that's required by the law, and we make sure that we have that. We make sure that our staff is trained appropriately. And the district makes sure that they had an anti-bullying coordinator, that way. We also make sure that each school has a school safety team, and that the appropriate policy is in place. If you go to the district website, into No Bully Zone, you can click there, and you will get a copy of our policy. We have to make sure, and we did, that our processes are standardized. The way we do an investigation and the process we follow is the same in each and every school. We go through the same process, the same length of time, no matter where you are in the district. And we also make sure that we implement an anti-bullying program.
Voy a hacer un sumario breve sobre el proceso de la ley. La ley requiere de que cada distrito escolar tenga un coordinador contra el acoso escolar. Eso en inglés se llama el Anti-Bullying Coordinator. Y es la señora Yuna Escocero que representa al distrito de nosotros como Anti-Bullying Coordinator. Pero cada escuela se supone que tenga una persona contra, perdón, anti-bullying especialista. Una especialista contra el acoso escolar. Y normalmente es un consejero, un adoro social que está ubicado en ese escuela. O sea, que si en cualquier momento ustedes se sintieran de que su niño ha sido acosado, le deben de averiguar quién es la persona que es el especialista contra el acoso escolar, y darle un informe sobre la situación.
The law also has certain training requirements that we have completed here in the district. We have trained all our professional staff with two hours of required training. We've given two hours of required training to all our security guards, cafeteria staff, transportation staff, and custodial staff. They all got two hours of training. And of course, we've had specialized training for our anti-bullying specialist and the anti-bullying coordinator. In addition to the required training, in Elizabeth, we have an electronic reporting system. And that's called Hipster. And we have trained all the appropriate school staff on that. We've also provided, or given information so that our staff can attend cyberbullying training, and law enforcement, and FBI training, and state provided training. There's a lot of training that our staff attends.
Otro aspecto de la ley también es el requisito de que las personas del sistema escolar sean entrenados en el acoso escolar, cómo evitar el acoso escolar. También entrenamiento para los especialistas contra el acoso escolar, y cómo hacer una investigación para determinar si es bullying o no. Y también entrenamiento específico en diferentes materias. Por ejemplo, como el cyberbullying, que es el acoso que se hace a través de la computadora.
Over the past two years, we've tracked our percentages of confirmed harassment, intimidation, or bullying in the district. For 2011, 2012, and 2012 to 2013, our percentage stayed more or less the same. It was approximately 33% of our investigations led to confirmed HIV. As of last month, on February 19th, the confirmed HIV numbers for the district are down a lot. At that point, it was 12% of all the investigations that we completed.
En términos de la estadística en el distrito de Elizabeth, durante el 2011 y el 2012, año escolar, de todos los casos que investigaron, un 33% fueron casos confirmados de acoso escolar. Lo mismo fue durante el 2012 y el 2013, 33%. Este año estamos a un 12%, o sea, que han bajado los incidentes de acoso escolar.
District-wide, we have a guidance curriculum that covers a lot of anti-bullying behaviors, character education, and other social skills that we provide through our guidance department and our social workers to our students. The strategies, however, are highly individualized, because that's how the law wanted it to be, and they are needs-based. So our different schools may be concentrating on different areas, because that is what is needed for their school. Some of the sample programs that our schools use are the Bar Foundation Anti-Bullying Program and our After-School Character Education Program. I want to take just a few seconds to talk about some of the strategies we use when we have a confirmed case of HIV. We provide either individual or group counseling to the students, both. Not only the victim, but also the offender, because both need the help. We, of course, implement our Code of Student Conduct. We sometimes change classrooms. We have referrals to outside treatment. And oftentimes, we meet with parents to see what help they need, and to see how we can help them.
No solo es importante saber la definición legal de lo que es el acoso escolar, y también del proceso de cómo investigar ese acoso, pero es también importante implementar prácticas y estrategias para prevenir el acoso escolar. Tenemos el currículum de consejería. Todas las escuelas tienen consejeros, y los consejeros van y hablan con los estudiantes, y hablan específicamente en cierta parte del año, especialmente en octubre, sobre el acoso escolar, y lo que es, y cómo evitarlo. También existen programas específicos. Hay una fundación que se llama The Bar Association, que es un grupo de abogados, y han desarrollado un programa contra el acoso escolar. Y diferentes personas de las escuelas han asistido, han participado en ese entrenamiento, y así de esa manera pueden trabajar con los maestros y con los niños, y cómo prevenir esto. También se existe ayuda individual de consejería. Se puede referir a los estudiantes que lo necesiten a consejería privada, o a programas a través del hospital.
¿Cómo llevas en español? Oh, hey, that's interesting, okay. Maybe I should switch to Spanish to do it here, okay? I must have been thinking in Spanish that morning, okay? Like we said a little while ago, the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights encourages schools to look at their own needs and be specific as to what programs they need. Therefore, the evaluation of those programs is based in the building. However, this year, as we said before, the confirmed cases of HIV in the district have dropped a lot. And this drop can be an indicator that whatever programs the schools are using, including our guidance curriculum, with the character education program, are having an effect as our rate has gone down dramatically.
Es ciertas cosas que son más fáciles de traducir. Otro componente de la ley es poder evaluar los programas que cada escuela ha implementado para determinar si están funcionando o no. Obviamente, basado en la estadística que tenemos, un baje de 33% a 12% indica que los programas que han sido implementados han empezado a funcionar.
So I'd like to take an opportunity to highlight a few of the things. We've done a lot, but I only put it on one slide. Some of the highlights. Every year, we have a Week of Respect, as the law requires, in October. We have taken kids to the Liberty Basketball Anti-Bullying Day Game. We've had the district training, we talked about it, with a lot of training. Also, the state training for myself, as well as my APSs. And we are always having speaker schools.
Ciertas funciones que se han implementado durante este año, varios ejemplos han sido la Semana de Respecto. La Semana de Respecto es una iniciativa que toma lugar durante la primera semana de octubre, y ocurre en todas las escuelas de New Jersey. O sea, que no es una cosa específicamente para nosotros aquí en Elizabeth. And during that week, there are different activities. They happen, people come to the schools to make presentations. Another thing that has been done, they have brought students to Liberty Basketball, Liberty for the sixth day against bullying. Training for all the persons in the district of Elizabeth. Training for the state for the anti-bullying coordinators, the coordinators against bullying. And they have also brought, as I mentioned, people who come and talk to the students during the different assemblies.
Going forward, we're going to continue to analyze the school and district needs and to determine which areas need improvement, and we're going to focus on those areas. At this point, we let all the requirements, we even got above the requirements, but we continually look to see what we can do better.
And what do we do now? We are going to continue analyzing the needs of each individual school and the needs of the district, determining the areas that we need to improve, and we need to focus on those areas that require our attention to be improved.
We both thank you for coming, and we hope that the information has been valuable to you. Thank you for coming. And we hope that the information that we gave is something that you guys wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Great job, great presentation, very informative. Thank you very much. I appreciate you taking the time to come here tonight and inform us. I know there are a lot of questions that you folks want answered. And like I said when we opened, we're going to make every opportunity to do that. Before I reopen the floor of the questions, I want to give the opportunity to my colleagues, if they'd like to say anything, make any remarks or any opening statements on their own behalf. Mr. Rodriguez, would you like to say anything? Mr. Rodriguez?
Good evening, everyone. First, I just want to thank all of you for coming out on a work night, school night. We know that this is a very personal issue, it's a very personal issue because it's affected your families, your family members, and those people are in pain. We know that it's a thing that has affected your family or the people you know. It's a very personal thing and it's hard. And we just want to, you know, we want you to understand that I love my colleagues. We are sympathetic to that. We know it hurts, and that's why Mr. Trujillo and the board have decided to come down and have a bullying forum to answer some questions and sometimes just to get you guys to be able to let go of some of that anger and just to have a conversation. So I just want to thank my colleagues for that opportunity. And I don't think he's here anymore, but I know Councilman Carlos Torres was here all year. I don't think he's here anymore, but just wanted to recognize himself. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Rodriguez? Square?
Hello? Good evening, everyone. I just want to again say thank you. I wanted to thank Mr. Trujillo, who had the actual idea to come out tonight and have this forum here. I think it's something much needed. I'm a parent, I have two boys, and it's something that I would, I know that if it happened to my kids, I would definitely be up in arms about it. And for me, it's information because it's some of these things that I just heard tonight I didn't know about, and I just heard them tonight. So I'm looking forward to probably doing this more often than other schools and hopefully PTA sessions and whatnot. Because it's something very valuable for not only the parents to know what they need to do, what is, what isn't, to understand it. But it's another thing for sometimes the students to hear it as well so they understand themselves. Because some kids might be getting abused or getting bullied, and they think that maybe it's teasing, and therefore, they stay closed, they don't say it, and then it ends up just going on, and that's when harm is really done. It's something that I commend the state for actually coming out with because it's a lot of kids that die. People don't understand, kids die because of these things. They sometimes kill themselves because of whatever feelings they have expressed from these situations. So it's something very important. As a parent, I can't stress it enough. But I thank you all for all coming out, and I'm looking forward to listening to what your concerns are and start addressing whatever those issues are from here on out. Thank you.
Good evening. I want to thank every single one of you for coming tonight. For me, it's a little bit easier to understand what's going on. I'm a social worker, and I do both regular aid and special aid. I'm involved in the whole process. And I have to commend the Elizabeth Board of Education for the entire process and the administrators, the persons in charge, because they are following everything that is needed. So I am very pleased, and I can tell you that what we're doing, we're paying the right direction. Okay, it's on the view. There is the process, we have to have a hearing. And we have sat in different hearings. You have a right. As parents, you know, you have rights to come and ask questions and be involved. One of the things, involvement is the main thing right now. Parents need to get involved in every aspect of the children's life, including asking questions, how is school doing, how are your friends? If they go out, they come out late, just get involved. You know, that's the best resource that you have right now. Just going to, I'm going to say two things in Spanish. Good night, thank you for coming. This is a good opportunity for us to understand a little bit what is bullying and how it happens at the level of the school. It can also happen at the level of our homes. But the state has certain requirements. For me, it's very important. I'm a social worker and I'm involved in this daily. I can tell you that the district of Elizabeth is being monitored very carefully. We have some educators and people who are in charge, who are involved, we receive monthly benefits. So everything is being monitored and we are working hard. If there is something that needs to be corrected, we always do. Anyhow, I appreciate you coming. I want you to be involved with our children. Knowing what they do, where they are, if they arrive late, what kind of friends they have, and how they conduct is part of what we can understand what is bullying. Thank you very much. And I invite you to follow the program if you have any questions. It's my pleasure to answer them in Spanish. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all. Now, if you're aware, we're all volunteers. Although we're elected to do this, we are volunteers, we're here on our own time. I know you guys are very, very busy with your own personal lives and careers, and I thank you for finding the time to do this. This is very important to our community, as you're aware. And thank you for supporting the initiative that we started here. As you have seen, you've all gotten a postcard. We ask that you write your question on there, that it be legible as best as possible, and that it be sincere, but yet respectful, okay? We have many professionals here in the room that really care about what's going on with your children in the school, and they want to help you. They're here to help you, and they want to answer your questions. Now, we can't debate any ongoing litigation or any case like that. We don't want to answer your questions to your case, but without discussing your personal case. That is something that is best done at the school level and through the process, okay? So in respecting the process, we ask that you all please respect that and just, you know, we'll give you all the information and directly to the avenue so that you may resolve your problems. That's the idea. We want to resolve the problems, we want to hear them, and we want to resolve them. As a matter of fact, under the leadership of President Montero, we've created a committee that's going to do work just on bullying. So hopefully, we can gather some of the information here, and the committee can start right away on starting to address some of those issues. I know Mr. Rodriguez is on that committee. Sospina, you're on that committee? Okay, Mr. Rodriguez is on that committee. I don't know all the other members that are on that committee, but it is a committee that's been recently formed in an effort to get ahead of this, okay? And bring more resolution and information to our public. Okay? If you have any questions, I want to ask you. I want you to write your question. Unfortunately, if you have a personal case that is pending, we can't discuss it here, okay? I want you to, please, do it through the process that begins in your school, with your director. Here are many professionals who want to help your children, who want to educate you in the process, but we have to supervise each other. There are things that the law doesn't allow, talking in public. There is a committee that recently was created by four members of the Board of Education that is going to study only this problem. And if we can attract attention to this problem and information from you, you can tell us what is happening. We don't have time for this process to begin. Through the committee, you can lead the committee and possibly change a policy, another way of working. Everything is possible. The important thing is we start to communicate, we start to talk, and we understand each other. I want you to write your questions, be respectful, please, write them so that they can be read. Here are a lot. I want to ask the senior Don Dosavas to read this. Please, he will give the mic, he will give the microphone, write his name, and ask his question, okay? I'm going to ask Don Dosavas to go around. He's going to assist us with this. Oh, we have the cards? Okay, that's better. We collected them. Okay, we collected them. It's better if you don't have them outside, okay? Yeah, that's good, that's good. If somebody is shy and wants to get up to speak, it's even better, okay? So who's going to read them? Yeah? Okay. Awesome. The great thing about having you is that she's bilingual, and this is a home run for us because if she wasn't bilingual, we'd be up a creek right now. But thank you, okay?
The first question is in Spanish. I'll read it in Spanish, then I'll do my best to translate it. Can a victim of bullying be changed to a different class?
Right up your alley.
Okay. We can change students to different classes to avoid contact with each other. We can change students to a different class to avoid contact with each other. This is something that you do at the school level, and you talk to the principal about.
I think she raised her hand. Do you have this?
Um, if I need you? If you have anything else, follow-up questions to this as we go through these, I'm going to be here at the end. Please feel free to come see me. I will be here, and I will take notes and get your name and everything else. If you have any questions after the answer that I give to this question, please, if you have a minute after, I will be here. You give your name, and we talk about your personal case. Next question. Can a bully only be a student or can it be also someone who works at the school? The law covers a possible bully as anyone in the school, whether it's a student or a staff member. The law covers... Everyone at the school. A bully can be a student, it can also be a teacher, or another person who works at the school. When does an incident rise to the level to be considered HIV in this district? When does an incident reach the level of being considered bullying in this district? We follow the law in the district. So if an allegation of bullying is brought to us, we do the investigation. We follow the law. If it ends up that it meets the requirements of bullying, that's what we call it as it is. If it doesn't meet the requirements of bullying, if you remember the definition that Dr. Anderson and I talked about, if it doesn't meet the requirements, then it's not bullying. That doesn't mean that we don't do anything about it. There are consequences, there are things we do, but it may not be harassment, intimidation, or bullying. We use the definition of bullying in the law. And when we investigate all the allegations of bullying, if it meets the requirements of the law, it's bullying. If it doesn't meet those requirements, it doesn't mean that we don't do anything. We use the policy of ourselves to give consequences, to help, but if it doesn't meet the requirements of the law, we don't put the name of bullying. But that doesn't mean that we don't do anything. In an investigation, when we get an allegation of bullying, the law says we have ten days to investigate it. We use our electronic system, and we put it in the system. We open the investigation. The person who's going to be investigated, the anti-bullying specialist, then starts to interview students. And it does. Interviews whoever that person needs to interview. Interviews the possible victims, the possible perpetrators, witnesses, teachers, whoever they need to investigate. When they have finished interviewing everybody and putting the information into our electronic system, they go through all the steps of the law, similar to what we did here today. And if it meets the requirements of the law, we deem it to be bullying or harassment, intimidation. At that point, it gets submitted to the principal. The principal reviews the case. If it meets with approval, he closes the incident and then sends it to me. I review the whole thing. So it's getting multiple reviews to make sure that we reached the right conclusion. And then if it meets all the requirements, you know, whether it's bullying or not, everything's filled out right, I send it to the superintendent. It then goes to the board and to board members. In the investigation, when there is an allegation, we have ten days to investigate. The person investigating starts by talking to the possible victim, the possible bullying. They also talk to any other student or adult in the building who can have information. After that, all the steps of the law, the same as we did today. If it meets all the requirements, it is bullying. If it doesn't, it's not. Then they send it to the principal, who revises it. The principal then sends it to me, I revise it, and then I send it to the superintendent. Then it goes to the Board of Education. Will the programs provided at schools help out the victims of bullying? And are there any programs for kids that wish to hurt themselves because of what's going on? All the programs... The programs at the school are for all the victims of bullying. And if there is a specific program to help with that, that is wanted to be achieved in the year. All the programs at the school, all the professionals at the school, whether they be psychologists, social workers, guidance counselors, are there for... are there for the victims or possible victims of bullying. They're also there to help the person accused of harassment, intimidation, and bullying to realize that whatever happened is not right and we help them too. We help all the kids because we are here to help everyone. Um, are there specific programs? There are policies in place with processes in, in place when, uh, we help, uh, students that, that express that they want to harm themselves. Um, tenemos programas en todas las escuelas para ayudar a las víctimas o posibles víctimas de bullying. También tenemos ese mismo programa para ayudar a los posibles bullying porque ellos también necesitan ayuda. Eh, también tenemos programas específicos y pólizas que, que nos dicen qué tenemos que hacer cuando, eh, niños nos dicen que, que quieren hacerse algo así mismo.
That's, that's okay. Um, I, I wanna emphasize that the intent of the law, the anti-bullying law, is, is to protect. However, suicide and bullying have been linked together. However, suicide or suicide attempt is a very complex process. It doesn't mean that we can say, because this happened, this leads to a suicide attempt. There's multiple factors, things like mental illness, like, um, big, um, previous suicide attempts, uh, by, by the individual, by the family. So, um, it's very, very, very complex. Um, what we have in the district is a very strong and, uh, suicide prevention policy where staff members are trained on identifying the signs of, of suicide. So that if a child says that they're going to kill themselves, they are assessed at the school and then they are required to be screened at the hospital level. And we have been very successful, thank you, thank God for, you know, for, for that. Um, so even though the law has, um, has indicated it, um, putting programs in, in place to assist children that are the victims of, of bullying, the, the suicide prevention policy has always been there. Um, ahora para decirlo en español. Eh, suicidio es una cosa muy compleja, a pesar de que la, la ley ha indicado de que, ah, tenemos que proteger a los niños contra el acoso escolar para prevenir el suicidio. No se puede indicar de que una, una cosa causa el suicidio. Hay muchos componentes para eso, como un historial de la familia, historial de, ah, de problema, de, de problema de salud mental. Y, eh, desde siempre en el distrito de Elizabeth ha existido una póliza bien fuerte para prevenir que los niños, ah, cometan el, el suicidio. Todas las personas que son parte de la, de la escuela tienen que pasar por entrenamiento como, de cómo identificar los, ah, los componentes de, de, de un posible suicidio basado en lo que los niños, lo, ah, lo que los niños están diciendo. Después las personas profesionales de salud mental hacen una evaluación y después basado en los resultados de esa evaluación, envían al niño al departamento psiquiátrico del hospital para estar seguro de que no vayan a cometer, ah, el suicidio.
Since Dr. Hernandez is standing here, we'll give all the questions that she can answer. Como ella está aquí, vamos a darle todas las preguntas para ella ahora. Um... My, a neighbor's child was bullied and started acting out by cutting herself. How can we help her with this matter? Um, the parent doesn't really understand how to get help. And when do we, when does the district get involved when they notice this behavior? Eh... La hija de, de un amigo, eh, sufrió acoso y empezó a cortarse a sí misma. ¿Cómo podemos ayudarla con este, este, este...? Este problema y buscar la solución, eh, cuando los padres no necesariamente saben cómo obtener ayuda.
Okay, uh, cutting is a very frightening thing for, for everybody because we can't understand why somebody would want to, uh, would want to cut themselves. However, uh, there's a very, very clear-cut difference between cutting and a suicide, uh, attempt. Cutting, um, is, is an attempt for individuals to try and cope. It's not the right way of coping, but it's a way of coping. As a result of that, they end up feeling, uh, feeling better. So, children that engage in any form of, of cutting are referred for outside counseling. They can also receive counseling in the school, with the school social worker or with the school counselor. So then this way, they learn a much more effective way of managing any, um, any conflict or, or any issues that, that they may be having. Cuando los niños se, se cortan, en realidad es una, una situación que, que causa miedo a la persona porque no podemos entender el porqué una persona se quiera cortar o se quiera herir. Pero es totalmente diferente a un atento de, de suicidio. Cuando las personas se cortan están buscando la manera de, de sentirse, ah, mejor. Pero tenemos que enseñarles a estas personas sobre estos niños de que hay otras maneras de que ellos se puedan sentir mejor. Y entonces lo que hacemos, se les provee consejería con los trabajadores sociales o los consejeros de la escuela y también se refieren a, para servicios de salud mental fuera de la escuela.
Why do you work with Dr. Hernandez? Thank you. A family member was bullied and as a result harmed themselves. The school district was aware, what do you do about this? Um, you said that when it's reported, you, you address it. Eh, un familiar fue acosado y como resultado se le dio el vino. El distrito sabía de su situación. ¿Qué se hace cuando algo se ha reportado a ustedes?
Um, anytime anybody indicates that, um, a child is, is being bullied, there's a process of, um, of investigation that, that takes place as units had, had indicated before. There's specific steps that define bullying in the law and that's the process that, that we define. Um, if there's a, anytime, any child, um, does anything to, to, to hurt themselves, if it's a possible suicide thinking that, that they're engaging in, they are identified, they are screened by the school mental health staff and then they're sent out to be screened by the emergency room of, um, I'm sorry, by the psychiatric emergency room in, in, in the hospital. Uh, if it's any other, any other type of self-harm like cutting that they're gonna be engaged in, it's the same process. We try and provide mental health services in the schools and then we also refer them out if that is warranted. No lo... Um, si, si hay un... Cada vez que una persona cree de que un niño ha sido acosado, se, se le reporta a la, al especialista contra el acoso escolar, se hace una investigación, los pasos que, que son, que están basados en la ley y se determina si es acoso escolar, de nuevo basado en la, en la ley. Si, eh, si en cualquier momento hay un niño que, que atenta a un suicidio o que se trata de cortarlo, se trata de herir, ah, lo que se hace, se hace una, una evaluación ese, en ese momento para determinar las necesidades. Si es necesario, se le envía al niño para el departamento de emergencia de psiquiatría del hospital. Si es otra cosa no, no tan severa, se les provee servicios de salud mental dentro de la escuela.
Um, these two questions are very similar, so I'm going to put them together. ¿Cómo puedo saber cuando mi hijo o hija está siendo acosado? ¿Cuáles son las señales? Eh, ¿cómo puedo saber si mi niña está sufriendo bullying? Ah, ya que hay niños que no hablan por miedo. Um, how can I know if my child is, is being bullied? What are the signals, um, that, that I can pick up on? Um, how will I know if they're being bullied? Some, some kids don't say anything because of fear.
Um, I, I think the best way to, to help your, your child to be bully-free is, is really to have open communication with, with your children. And I know that it's, it's difficult sometimes when children come home and you ask them, "What did you do in school?" They're always gonna say, "We did nothing." Uh, and I promise you, they do something, uh, during the day and they have, they have friends. So, have that communication. Don't take that initial answer that, you know, "Oh, if everything is fine." Talk to them, annoy them if, if you have to. So maintain that communication with them. Know who their friends are, uh, because children will tell all their children about their problems. They will tell them if they're having any suicidal thoughts or they will tell them if they're getting into fights with other children. They will tell all their children if they're being bullied. And a lot of time, the information comes from those children. So, talk to your children, be on top of your children and know who their friends or your children are. Um... Una de las cosas más importantes que se puede hacer para ayudar a sus hijos y para prevenir situaciones, ah, malas es hablarle a sus hijos todos los días. Cada vez que vengan sus niños a la casa, avéen con ellos. Pregúntele qué existe en la escuela, quiénes son tus amistades. Y, y siempre los niños dicen, "No, no, no hicimos nada, todo está bien." Pero sigan hablando con... Ah, estén al tanto de las amistades, conozcan las amistades de, de los niños. Porque una de las cosas que los niños hacen con frecuencia, cada vez que tienen un problema, les hablan a los amiguitos. Y la mayoría de las veces, los amiguitos son los que reportan si algo está sucediendo, en términos de que están teniendo un problema con otro niño o si tienen algunos, algunos pensamientos que, que puedan causar, ah, pensamientos de, de suicidio.
If someone is bullying you and you bully them back, is that bad and, and should those get in trouble? Um, si alguien está, me está acosando y yo le acoso de vuelta, es eso malo y, y, y los dos deben de, eh, estar en problemas? Um, bullying is never good, whether you're being bullied or whether you're bullying someone back. Um... If you, if you are being bullied or you feel that you're being bullied, you need to tell someone so we can start the investigation, separate. You talk to the other person to make him stop, whatever. Um, doing the same thing back shouldn't be the answer. El acoso nunca es bueno. No es bueno cuando me lo hacen a mí y no es bueno porque yo se lo hago a otra persona tampoco. Si alguien, si usted cree que alguien le está haciendo, acosando a usted, lo primero que debe hacer es ir al director, a la maestra, a la guidance counselor, a alguien en el edificio y decírselo para que esas personas tomen, eh, eh, sepan lo que está pasando, hagan investigación, hagan con esa otra persona para que pare. Y, y, y así, este, tú mismo no, no va a estar en problemas. Do you feel like in this district, parents are informed about HIV policies and procedures? Do you feel that the information are, is being adequately met given to parents who cannot make these meetings? I guess the parent meetings are training. Um, other than these meetings, what are other ways to commit the, of communication that the district uses? ¿Cree que los, eh, en este distrito los padres son informados bien de la póliza de, de, de HIV? Eh, ¿usted cree que la información se le da a los padres adecuadamente? Si no pueden ir a estas reuniones, ¿qué otra cosa, forma de comunicación tiene el distrito para informar a los padres? We do have at the schools the parent meetings and trainings that, that we spoke about. Um, oftentimes, we have them at different times of the day to try to allow the parents, whether in the morning or over the afternoon or whatever it is, to come. We do have our website that we talked about, um, earlier that has the policy and, and has resources there. Um, it has all my information. You can call me. Um, I talk to parents in, in my office. I, I, you know, um, I'm pretty happy to appointment, but otherwise, I, I, I can see you anyway as long as I am there. Um, the kids at school receive training at their level and are, and, and the week of respect, I, I know the parents are involved with that in, in many of our schools. Um, each school has individual type things that they inform parents about and they give policies depending on the grades of the students to take back to their parents. En el distrito, eh, te comunicamos a, a los padres en, en las reuniones, entrenamientos de padres de cual hablamos hace un poquito. Los hacemos a diferentes horas para que los padres que trabajan por la mañana o por la tarde, a lo mejor tienen un tiempo para llegar a algunas de esas reuniones. Eh, también tenemos toda la información en el webpage del distrito. Ahí también está, eh, la póliza, recursos para los padres. También está mi nombre y mi información, que me pueden llamar a mí, pueden pedir a verme. Igualmente, a los, a los niños en la escuela, en su, para su edad, adecuada para su edad, le dan entrenamiento a, sobre la misma cosa. Muchas veces le dan información para que lleven a la, a la casa, eh, enseñarle a los padres durante la semana de repito. Lo, los, eh, la escuela hace mucho para tratar de informar a, a los padres. I spoke with a parent previously who came here and this parent has no idea about the HIV laws and regulations. Why do you think some parents don't have a clue about this? Um, can parents get newsletter or something else to get this information about HIV?
I, uh... I recorded two robocalls, Spanish and English, and they went out to every household in the district. And we have twenty, thirty, I won't even say if we have forty people here. Um, it's apathy, more than anything. I assure you that we are making every effort to try to communicate, disseminate this to everyone. It is in our interest as elected officials and leaders in our community that, that we are informing the constituency. It is very important to us. If they choose not to, uh, seek the information, we, there's only so much we can do. There are newsletters that go out. We mail stuff all the time. There are things disseminated throughout the schools as Unis, uh, Dr. Hernandez, um, alluded to. There, there are workshops. There, there are avenues to find help. Uh, this, alone here, this is a, a, a way of us reaching out to, to, to get to the public. So, if, we're not, I'm sure we're not reaching everyone, but it's not from a lack of trying. And it's a two-way street. This is a partnership. Um, it's, it's this board, it's the administration and the parents make it all work so the children get a better education and are protected and we can create this, uh, bully-free environment. But the parents have a responsibility. We have a responsibility as parents to seek the help and be the advocate for our children. Uh, we can't sit back and just wait for the school district to do everything. We have to ask for the services. We have to communicate with them what we need so that they can better understand and, and create the policies through this board and the practices that are necessary. Um, if someone doesn't know about this, I don't know why. I just, you know, it's hard for me to understand why they wouldn't know about it because there is so much information out there and we're making such a big effort. If someone can tell me when we're done here, how we can do better, that's what this is about. It's about learning what we can do better and how we can reach those parents. Se trata de aprender cómo podemos mejorar y cómo podemos devolver a esos padres a los que queremos.
¿Por qué no hacen una ley para castigar y hacer los padres tener consecuencias con las acciones de los hijos? ¿Por qué no hacen una ley para castigar y hacer los padres tener consecuencias con las acciones de sus hijos? No sé por qué no hacen una ley como esa.
Porque todos vamos a la cárcel. Mis hijos no son ángeles. Mis hijos hacen algo mal. Si fuéramos responsables de todo lo que nuestro hijo hizo, por el hecho de que fuéramos a la cárcel, probablemente todos estaríamos en prisión. El hecho es que tenemos que ser como ejemplos para nuestros hijos. Y desafortunadamente a veces fallamos. Hacemos lo mejor que podemos y nuestros hijos van y hacen algo malo y nos metemos en problemas. De futuradamente, si así fuera el caso, tuviéramos todos presos. Porque la verdad es que los hijos alguna vez van a cometer errores. Importante que nosotros tratemos de educarlos y ser buen padres y darles buen ejemplo. Con todo eso se equivocan. ¿Quién aquí no se equivocó con los niños? Imagínense si su papá o su mamá tuvieron que pagar todo lo que hicimos. ¿Quién tuviera padre o madre? De futuradamente, ser castigo no es la solución. A través de la educación y el cariño. Y uno debe de evolucionarse en lo que es la educación de su hijo y la vida de ellos. Puntalarse, el amigo, los hijos, no solamente padres. Podemos crear una sociedad más amable donde podemos vivir juntos si no hay tantos problemas. De futuradamente, todos somos hombres y mujeres y tenemos ese defecto de que no somos perfectos. Nadie es perfecto. Se imaginen si cada vez que un niño ocupa una ventana jugando con una pelota, se mete el padre preso. Sí, se le puede pedir que el padre pague la ventana, pero que tuviera preso. Si dos niños se pelean con un chico en una clase, van a ir presos los padres. No creo que juntos. Lo importante es que los padres, los adultos tienen que actuar como adultos. Entienden que los niños van a ser niños. Y que es una parte muy bonita de la vida, no se le puede quitar esa inocencia. Se tienen que entender que es difícil ser niño, más en este mundo, hay tanta información y todo está corriendo tan rápido. Se pueden cometer tantos errores, pero lo bonito tiene que comunicarse, no meter a las personas presas. A lo contrario, tenemos que dejarlos liberales, no agarrarse. Este país, ahorita hay millones de personas presas, personas que cometieron un delito. Pero imagínense si sus padres empiezan a llegar a sacarse porque cada vez que un niño se comete un error. Ahora hay un caso de acoso, también hay dos víctimas, dos niños. Por una razón, un niño se siente que tiene que hacer un daño al otro y el otro es víctima. Pero desacción, pero los dos son víctimas en el sentido de que los dos hacen falta ayuda. Nosotros estamos aquí para representar a todos los niños, corregir la acción del agresor y ayudarle a que fue la víctima del agresor. Lo importante es tener que todos son niños y nosotros aquí no queremos meter a nadie preso, no queremos crear una ley en que los padres vayan presos, lo que queremos es ayudar, entender, ayudar y dar los servicios que merecen. Más que todo, el amor a nuestros hijos es la clave. No guardar los padres cada vez que el niño hace, comete un error. ¿Tuvimos todos presos? ¿Quién aquí puede decir que es perfecto y tiene un hijo perfecto en la casa? Porque yo tengo dos y me están sacando canas. Si alguien puede decir, por favor, espero aquí afuera y usted me explica cómo crear dos niños perfectos para que me metan preso.
Las dos últimas preguntas no pertenecen a HIV y pertenecen a la escuela. Para aquellos que escribieron las preguntas, estaré feliz de discutirlas contigo al final. Pero si no se trata de HIV, las dejaremos para que me hables personalmente. Gracias.
Está tarde. Gracias a todos por venir. De nuevo, gracias a la administración por tomarse el tiempo y traer a nuestro personal aquí y estar tan tarde con nosotros. De nuevo, este fue un esfuerzo para tratar de disimular la información para ti y responder a todas tus preguntas, para que te entiendas mejor de lo que el distrito está haciendo en cuanto a bullying. Quisiera que hubiera más gente aquí, francamente. Le pido que tome la información que obtuvieron hoy y que hayan aprendido y que hayan aprendido. Les quiero dar las gracias y estarte. Gracias por venir aquí. Esto fue un esfuerzo de parte de los miembros de la comisión administrativa a traer la información sobre la póliza de acoso aquí en el distrito. De futuradamente quisiera que cuando tuviera lleno de personas, pero cuando pudieran asistir por varias razones. Pero no hay excusas. Aquí estamos nosotros, por favor lleven la información y compártela con sus amigos, sus familias. Si tienen alguna otra pregunta, un consejo, por favor aquí vamos a estar ahora. Aquí la señora Yunes y la doctora se van a quedar aquí. Podemos hablar con ellos, pueden practicar privadamente y darles información. Y si Dios quiere, se pueden resolver más problemas de los que existen. Ok? Gracias a todos y que pasen buena noche.